And.
Yeah.
And we won't wake up with anything.
Can you tell the class what we drew?
Okay, it's four fifteen and out of respective time, I will go ahead and call this special joint meeting to order that involves the Decorah Community School District and the Decorah City Council taking a roll call. I see that all school board members are present and it looks like we're still waiting for Randy.
She'll fall soon.
Randy and Cody both be joining us.
Both be joining.
Yeah, he went to the city hall, I think he did, so I.
Okay.
Brent unfortunately cannot make, he got called into a meeting this afternoon.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and read our mission and vision statements for the school district. At the Decorah Community School District, we embrace student learning and well-being as our fundamental purpose. We will, in partnership with our students, families and community, make the world a better place. The mission of the Decorah Community School District is learning, thriving, creating our legacy. The vision of the Decorah Community School District is Decorah Community School District will be a collaborative, innovative, learning-centered organization empowering students to embrace their personal strengths and create their future. And next, I'll accept a motion for approval of tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, hearing a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, the first item on our agenda tonight is a discussion with Decorah City Council and the school board to talk about the site plan of our new elementary school project. And as we begin, I want to express my gratitude to everyone tonight. This is a lot of people to carve out time on short notice. So thank you for sharing your time in this way. And thank you also for time that you've shared in small conversations over the last week. Um, we, you know, I know that we've together or the, the people that have been talking have collected notes. And thanks to our construction team who is here, we have Tom Zalhaska from Myron Construction who came from Madison, Wisconsin today. We have Nick Hildebrandt with Emergent and Patty with Emergent that came from the Cedar Falls area. And we have Patrick Alvord, who came from, did you come from Des Moines today? Thank you for your time and your miles to Decorah. Um, I'd like to recommend that tonight's conversation. Um, you know, I'm, I'm sure that we can all agree to stay focused on good action and solutions to get our elementary school passed because I know that I heard in our last meeting, we all care very much about having a school in our downtown. And um, I, I wanted the kids to stay at the, the center of our conversation today. Um, I'd like to suggest, um, as I mentioned, our construction teams traveled far and they've been working hard um, to think ahead with some of the key things that we've heard in public meetings in mind. And I'd like to suggest that we start um by just going through topic, topics one at a time. And I'd like to start around parking. Parking is one thing that I heard that was a topic of concern. And if the council agrees to that, I'd like to start there and maybe hear directly from Patrick Alvord on some solutions that we found to have proposed reductions in parking.
We're gonna go maybe start at a little bit more high level, if that's alright, and just talk a little bit about some site constraints. Let me switch talk to him maybe because I'm gonna probably do better.
I like how he like sure he took his Green Bay Packers hat with him.
Thank you. Alright, we've heard last week throughout this week, um, number throughout last week, we did go to speak a number of conversations about the site that we are addressing here. And I think it's important to just reiterate some of the constraints that we are facing from a design perspective that um, helped lead to different decisions that are made on the site. So just a couple of high level periodically throughout our conversation this evening, Nick or Patty or Tom might jump in, Cindy might jump in. Um, but I'll just start things off with a couple of the big, big ticket items. Um, congestion on Clayborne, drop off and pickup time, certainly a challenge. Preservation of existing vegetation and mitigation of slope along the north side of Hyveley is a challenge on the site. There's great change here that is not something that we're gonna mitigate as a part of this project. We are going to respond to it in the way that we designed the site entering uh, into the building, an existing school building that wants to remain open for as long as possible while the new building is under construction, certainly a consideration. Stormwater, um, which will use the existing easement as sort of the reference point for that discussion, but it's something that we'll come back to later on. Um, west side open space, sort of a public front door to city hall. Um, and, and then sort of a separation, best practice, if you will, of separating bus drop off from parent drop off to help reduce congestion and facilitate easy transition in and out of the building. Okay, the site plan that you were seeing in the background of this, for this diagram is different than the one that you saw last week. And that's intentional because I want to talk about some of those specific items. So Cindy set the conversation up talking about parking. And last week when we met, uh, we had a hundred and eleven parking stalls shown on site that was a hundred and five standard stalls and six ADA stalls. And based on the discussion last week and the desire to come together, we looked at a cycling concept that would reduce parking. And that requires a two-fold approach. One, we need to reduce the number of full-time staff that we were designing for. So you heard a number of different numbers throughout the various conversations about how many full-time staff there would be in this building when it opens. We use eighty as our target during our site plans and middle process. But the number has ranged anywhere from seventy-two to eighty-five, depending on who you've talked to and, and when you're having that conversation. So we struck a line relative to the site design and said seventy-five is the number. So we are designing for seventy-five full-time staff. So by code one to one plus ten visitors. The site plan that you see up here right now shows eighty-six parking stalls. Okay, there are a couple of things that we did to help facilitate that. One, we immediately took out those nine stalls up here in the northeast corner of the site, which opens some space up there in that corner. So we also have a bit of more of a front door experience up in that northeast quadrant on the site. The other thing that we looked at was what happens when we shift this parking down, council observer, and this is directly in response to the conversation we had about parking buffer along the north side of the site. You don't see it well in this graphic, but there's now a four-foot buffer strip between the back of those parking stalls and the ten-foot wide sidewalk. Which incidentally is now continuous across the north side of the site and all the way down to in the corner at the Hyveley Roundabout. Okay, what that required us then to do was to reconsider if there was parking on the north side of the tennis courts. Okay, in shifting that to the south, we approached on the depth that we had for those parking stalls and we had to accept the loss of those stalls as a part of this overall plan. That had an added benefit though. We already had site circulation across the north side of the tennis court. But in losing those stalls, we actually have a much more generous connection there that provides better access along the north side than we previously had.
And Patrick, that is specifically better pedestrian access. Yep.
Yes. Um, and, and that is very much the way circulation works off of State Street now. For anybody walking or biking down State Street, if they're entering into the new school um, from that side of the site, they are currently coming along the south side of the parking access drive. And this replicates that condition. Okay. There was an overall reduction in that parking then in this northeast lot. The other thing that we've looked at is a narrowing of the access drive off of Clayborne. Um, or potentially inbound traffic only. But we're maintaining two-way traffic at State Street. I want to talk about that a little bit. When we design one-way traffic, we're designing for two times the day, morning drop off and afternoon pickup. The rest of the day, we have lower traffic volumes than that site. When we go to a one-way configuration, we narrow parking aisles and angled parking stalls, we're gonna see a net reduction in overall parking. We knew we were trying to hit a number. We've hit that number and we've maintained a more convenient circulation pattern in that space that will allow non-peak hour traffic to choose which direction they want to roll through that parking lot, which is more convenient for entry and exit. And then we can control inbound and outbound traffic during those peak times. Okay, so this would allow somebody coming down Clayborne from the west to make the right turn in. During drop off, they would immediately go right into the site, queue in the parent drop off lane and then exit right-hand only on the State Street. Right, same thing. If you've got eastbound traffic on Clayborne and Clayborne coming down, they can turn left into the site and then circulate the same way. And then again, non-peak traffic, they're allowing left and right turning and out over here on State Street. So it is a configuration that meets some of the things, the goals of some of the things that we've heard over the last week. Um, and provides and improves other circulation inside. Any questions about that lot and those changes?
So, I think you said that initially you started out with a hundred and eleven parking space. Where are you down to now?
Just like eighty-six.
Eighty-six, okay.
Cool.
How many, how many spots were on the north side of the tennis courts?
Uh, we had fifteen over here, so do the math, it was ninety-seven. Oh, you mean specifically here.
Specifically, we, we took away the nine in the northeast corner and then. Twelve plus one ADA.
Yeah. Close. So that ADA stall moved to the north side, and now we've got a crossing aisle there to facilitate that. Um, with respect to ADA on a eighty-six or eighty-five stall lot, we require for four stalls. We know we have some mobility impaired students that need access off the southwest corner of the building. We have six total ADA stalls on the site. So we didn't reduce the number of ADA stalls, but we did reduce the total amount, total amount of work.
Uh, I'm sorry, you used my last name earlier. I only know Patrick though. Uh, I, I'm not assigning disrespect. Can you, can you, uh, can, can you tell us, is there any reason that you couldn't add ADA spots, uh, convert some of the traditional spots to ADA spots if we need to?
No, there's, there's no reason at all, except that if you don't design for it upfront, when you go through that restriping process, it's, it's an issue of restriping the whole lot, not just restriping a portion of it, because we have to account for stall width and access aisle. And that has a downstream effect to all the other stalls in the run. So we plan for it upfront, so we make sure that we've got the curb-to-curb distance needed to accommodate the required minimum width for the stall and the access aisle.
But, but in this, I mean, even if there's one fewer ADA spot, if there's ever a situation where the school just needs more ADA parking, it's possible.
Correct.
With paint, okay.
Yeah, so we'll have, what, two standard stalls on the north, at the north entrance of the building. And we've got the three stalls down here on the southwest. If we're gonna lose one initially, my recommendation would be that it would be one over here and this, and this stack is three. Um, because three might be excessive based on current need. And then we would just convert that to a parallel stall and it's, there's no restriping necessary. We'll just designate it as an ADA stall.
Thanks.
Yeah. Good questions. Any other questions relative to the north side part? Okay, hearing none. On the southwest side of the building where we have the bus lane, there were a couple of things that were constraining the design of the site. We're very cognizant of where this bus lane intersects the S curve on Hyveley. So changing its location east or west creates more challenges as we move up Hyveley to the east. Or it creates challenges if we move closer to the roundabout. So we're kind of in a, in the sweet spot in terms of the curb cut locations along Hyveley.
Where's Court on there?
Court is right here.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. I'm gonna grab my water bottle. This hall is talking, this is gonna make it worse. In this lot, we went from thirteen spaces to seven. And the way that we did that was we went from a head-in or angled configuration to a parallel configuration. So we narrowed up the driveline a little bit. Uh, but still with plenty of room for buses to turn in for vehicles that are pulling in to park, uh, ample space to move around. And then we went with an eight-foot wide parallel stall and an eight-foot wide access aisle. If you've ever designed accessible parking, you'll know that parallel stalls are not the absolute best configuration for ADA. But if they're designed correctly, they're very functional, they work very well. So by allowing an eight-foot access aisle with the eight-foot stall, it means that a driver who needs that parallel space who is gonna park in that parallel space can use the entirety of the sixteen-foot distance to position their vehicle and then allow themselves clearance on either side to move, whether it's a passenger or themselves in and out of the vehicle. They're also designed at twenty-five feet long, so that gives them ample space to stack in front of the car behind them or in front of them and still provide room off the back of a vehicle to get a mobility device out of the vehicle. So those are designed in that way, um, in position closest to the east end of the bus lane. And then we restripped the crossing location so that it sits behind the bus queue. So if parents are dropping off here and needing to move their students out of their vehicle and into the building, while the buses are in the queue, they have ample room to get around behind and not be in conflict with that bus traffic. And then this is a depressed curb configuration, so there's no barrier there for anybody in a mobility device. You get out of the vehicle and you roll up across and then across that pavement and up into the building here in the southwest corner. So again, it's a trade-off between, does it want to be a head-in or angled configuration with uh, an appropriately designed parallel configuration. This is the best solution for the site to reduce parking. And then we stacked three or four uh, parallel stalls in front of them. So you still have some convenience parking for kitchen staff or staff that are working on that southwest corner of the building. One of the other conversations.
Um, just want to elaborate a little bit more on that southwest corner of the building. The reason why we have um, a larger number of handicapped spaces there is because directly in that southwest corner is where we have our special education room with the high need students. So this allows the parents to have a direct access from the parking lot directly to their classroom. So just a little.
Couple of things this allows us to do. Um, one of the, one of the comments that had come up was this desire line that had previously been shown where we had the access aisle for ADA crossing the bus lane and connecting to the west play yard. This obviously moves that, but it also provides us an opportunity to create a landscape buffer there along those parallel stalls that will then discourage folks from cutting through the landscape bed and into the traffic in bus lanes.
So that white area will be landscaping, not pavement.
Correct. Then, so the city's project is installing a ten-foot wide multi-use trail all the way along to this point here where the grade starts to get challenging. Can't continue it any further. Excuse me, farther. Um, I met with Aaron Detter this morning from Upper Iowa. And one of his suggestions, and I think it's a, a very viable one, is that we just add a convenience sidewalk here at this corner, so that if you do have students or families that are crossing at this location, rather than pushing them all the way down and across the bus lane, they can just access this, this aisle and cut across. So we'll be adding that little patch of concrete into the corner of it. Any questions about parking?
I, I just want to thank you. I know that you and I had some conversation. We can go about some of these spots and it feels like at the cost of a few parking spots, which I acknowledge, that's, that's a real cost.
Yep.
Uh, it does seem like the circulation is a lot more intuitive and it prevents a lot more potential car-child interactions that are really busy corridor. So
Yeah.
Thanks for, thanks for taking seriously some of our thoughts and, and I'm really pleased with the southeast or southwest corner, uh, as far as access to the site. Um, my, my, uh, I'm gonna hold, I'm gonna hold the question as big until the end, that's fine. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you.
Both the city and you, but um, could someone explain, uh, compare the, the future parking along Clayborne? Um, uh, once this building is built, um, here to now, will there still be, that, that's a city question, right? Will you continue to have the same parking along along Clayborne that we have now? After the school is gone.
We haven't identified when Clayborne would be redone in the next few years. Uh, we've got Hyveley that we've advanced to try and make sure that Hyveley is done during the same time your project's being done so that it doesn't, it's not under construction when you try and open the doors. But beyond that, uh, we do not have our next big street project planned, so I can't answer. And it's very well possible that several of the council members here are not gonna be sitting here when that decision's made.
Um, if somebody were to utilize the north alley parking there, what would be their access way to get to that southwest door there? Would it be to cross there at Court?
Yes.
That, that, that crossing there?
Yeah, fair with me. I have another diagram that this may allow me to move, switch through. Um. Alright, we'll start here. Um, since we're talking kind of at a high level about site access in general. This is the existing configuration of the site. Right now, you, you have approximately three primary routes into the building. If you come from the southeast, you're coming up along state and accessing the building here from the south or the northeast here at the southwest quadrant of state and Clayborne, and then from the west currently along the north side of Hyveley and connecting down across the site here. And that is not to suggest that there aren't folks that are coming in from the southwest, but there currently isn't any infrastructure there to accommodate families that want to come in from that way. So new configuration as illustrated here will show probably six different ways onto the site. The same existing three here don't go away. The difference is, is that to, you're forty. If you're coming from the southeast along the north out or along the alleyway, you can step onto the new sidewalk that the High of the Street project is gonna install between North Alley and Hyveley and walk to the west and then pick up the crossing here at Court Street, which will have a rectangular rapid flashing beacon and then connect to the school site. And then from that location, you're moving either east or west under the current, this is the old plan shown, but site access to our business. Multiple points of connection on the west now, so you can still stay on the north side of Hyveley and walk along or bike along the new ten-foot shared use path that has been installed. Or you can cut across, you can come across the site and walk along the new ten-foot shared use path that will be on the south side of Clayborne and connect to the site. Conversely, you can just access the site along the bus lane and into the building here.
Okay.
The other thing to point out, I don't know if this was very clear previously, and I know we didn't discuss it, but there is sidewalk around the building in its entirety. So if somebody chose to cross here at Court and wanted to go over to the northeast side of the site, they'd simply pass through the gate here and come through the site, assuming non-school hours, of course, and could get to the tennis courts or the public open space on this side of the building.
I believe you also, don't you have a gate on the west side of the building as well that you could pass through to get?
We do, we have, we have multiple gates on the west play yard. Um, one's really for maintenance access, but the other two are to facilitate cross-site connection.
Okay, good, thank you.
Can you just point, because I, I, that was, came up, actually, Chris and I were talking about like, where, when we park, uh, we apparently are the only two people and our wives that park on, uh, in the north alley to get to football games sometimes. And right now, you're kind of stumbling through the dark, but, but you would be able to cross through a gate, walk by the western edge of the school, presumably there'd be a light and walk through a gate to that you would pop out on top of Clayborne.
Correct. So in this enlargement, uh, with the new site plan, cross at Court, find your way around the bus lane, or if there are no buses, feel free to walk across, it's fine. Um, enter into the west play yard here and circulate up to the north. Um, we have some great challenges on this north side, so for us to facilitate a future connection here, we'll have to install a stair. It won't be a ramp route, but there is still an accessible pathway around if need be. But we'll add a convenience stair that will connect to the ten-foot wide shared use path of the north. And then a future Clayborne project can install crosswalk, a rectangular rapid flashing beacon if it's necessary, and curb cut on the north side of Clay.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
How big is that green?
It's currently drawn as eight foot wide.
Patrick, uh, is, are, are buses going up grade to get into the circle there? I'm, I'm not familiar.
They're not.
So it's a, it's a flag grave. I was kind of curious about, um, if they were gonna lose visibility going up a hill, but it sounds like they're not.
They're not. Um, also, it's important to note that all buses will, we've been told, are coming from the east. So based on the way drop off works at the high school, they'll come around and enter into this bus lane, right turn only from Hyveley into the bus lane. And then exit obviously right turn only going out now.
Passengers on the crosswalk won't be disappearing under the hood. That's what I was kind of wondering about.
Yeah, and, and, and more importantly, um, having the crossing in this location well out in front of the view restrictions of a bus is an important. And we did, we did have some conversations last week, and then I certainly spoke with Aaron about it this morning, whether or not adding the crossing here would make sense. The great change in challenges on putting a crossing on that, on that S curve as I, as we discussed last week, or there are very important challenges to, to try to avoid. Um, and he agreed that understanding that, that there is that challenge there, while the, the desire would be to prevent crossing in this location when there's bus traffic moving through, knowing that we have this option here that increases that site distance for vehicles coming and turning in, um, was seen as a positive outcome from these changes. Um was seen as a positive outcome from these changes. What other questions?
I just wanna observe, I, I think that this is a. This configuration does an even better job leveraging the ample open parking that's often there in the north alley already. And I hope that community members, you know, recognize, of course, that there's gonna be some parking spots that come out if this is the way things go. But the access to, I mean, I think there's dozens of spots currently right now within steps of, of that crossing to the southwest side right now. Um and that's, that's pretty common, so I, I feel like this is a good way of leveraging. Resources the community has already invested a lot in providing without, you know, needing to build more parking spots. On a pretty cramped side, so, uh thanks, this is really great, yeah.
Can we just talk a little bit about the gates while we're, we're on the gates?
Yep.
Um. We wouldn't have those locked. Uh we wouldn't have them locked, we would have them closed during the day for playground and recess times. But there was a desire about how could we make sure that this is accessible? Uh nights, weekends, all summer long, um so. Steve and I talked about even a sign that would invite people. Playground, you know, instead of saying, don't play on the playground during the school day, like. Public welcome to enjoy playground during non-school hours, which is a kind of a, I've seen that before on playgrounds. But other thoughts on the gates on how they might stay open? If we, if, like, if it's summertime, school's out for summer, Alice Cooper's played, the whole thing, how do we, how do we? Make that open?
Well, and speaking of Alice Cooper, can I, cause I have a gate piece of question on this side.
Please.
So the only. Somewhat continuing green space on the site wasn't allowed for things like we have the Alzheimer's block on Nordic Fest. For pride, right? It isn't really this area.
Good.
Yes.
And my question is what can we do to create, to let the gate do? So that right now it's broken up, so if you were to have an event here, you don't really have that much space because. This is a green space, you would utilize the fence through it.
Yeah.
And I recognize during the school day, you wanna keep that gate closed, but what kind of gate could be designed? So literally in summer or on weekends, that gate could come open and open up the green space, or it really could be the community space. That was. Promised to establish in that area.
Okay, well, we already have an access gate planned for the corner here. But what I'm hearing is you'd like a more gracious opening?
Yeah, because imagine um you've got a speaker. Alice Cooper, right, and there's gonna be at the corner there. You would have people essentially, there'd be a gate dividing the whole venue, and so how do you then? Open that space up? From. Or Nordic Fest, you know, the rock room down there.
I'm gonna apologize, because I don't have my landscape plan in the slide deck, but. It's important to note that as it's presently designed, planned and submitted, there is. Landscaping in this area, trees, both deciduous and coniferous, that are creating a more. Vibrant and green entrance to the site, so this is not functioning really as open space in the sense that you could hold an event. Within that triangle based on the current landscape plan. So you would, you would need to be within the play yard to have sort of unfettered access to the site and be able to follow around. Um and so I, I, to some degree, the conversation about a gate also then. Suggests we need to reconsider the landscape plan there to provide a little bit more open space. And in, in my mind, in a site that is limited vegetation. This is an opportunity to replant and get some trees into this corner of the site where they don't presently exist.
Mm-hmm.
Um I think, and I don't wanna speak out in front, but I mean, certainly something that, that we can explore. If, if the openness of that corner would be important.
I'm wondering, I'm wondering how mu. It's hard to judge by looking at a two dimensional drawing.
Yeah.
But I'm wondering, like, how many, how many people attend the events that you're thinking of? And would they fit on that open play yard area? Um one thing that has been mentioned. Would be like a rolling gate to have a gate that is permanently open without that swinging back and forth, but to roll to the side. That might feel more welcoming to walk in. Um. And. I wonder if it's possible to have some of the same events that we've had historically in this area. But just within the playground on that, on that. Open play yard area instead.
I, I think that, I think, you know, it's easy, when you look at a paper, it feels fairly tight, you know what I mean? But, but when you look at the size of the school bus and imagine how many school buses could fit into the fenced in square section up there. I think it, it would actually hold a fairly sizable, you know, large group of people. It, it might not be as much square footage as currently exists on the site. But I, I see it as appropriately sized for a community of our.
Do you know what the dimensions are of the? I'm just curious on the spot, just for reference, we are. Hundred and fifty feet in the more south direction and. Thirty percent longer and.
Oh, okay.
So don't have that dimension off.
Right, it's a pretty sizable order.
It's a sizable order, oh thank you, thank you.
That's currently astroturf, right?
To be clear, it's, it's designed, it's designed as. Astro turf or synthetic turf, but we're bidding it as natural grass with the ultimate being synthetic turf. So depending on where pricing came in, it could be natural grass, it could be synthetic turf. Either way, it's synthetic turf over a rock base, so it's. Well, we're going to be able to, to move water off of that surface quicker than we would from natural grass. It is still going into the rock base and then into the retention pond underneath. And it is not sitting on concrete.
Yeah, I'm just thinking for community space, you know, obviously astroturf is not ideal. Um and so I even heard some children playing. I think, you know, the astroturf on one side, could there be natural grass? And I don't know if the district would be open to this idea of. Don't bet it, just let that be grass so that events like Nordic Fest.
So one thing that I wanna mention, um. We want as much space for our elementary students to run and exercise outdoors during recess. I wanna mention that we heard from our teachers, you know, school is obvi- obviously held this time of year. When the grass is dormant and we want. A space, we don't want, you know, we, we would love for that whole space to be used all year long. I wonder, is it possible to imagine? Um, community events on turf, I know that we haven't had decorum community events on turf. But in one of our conversations, Patty, you talked about a turf area that's very popular in downtown Cedar Falls. And if the council is open to listening about that, I'd like your ears to hear that as well.
Um, so Nick and I work on, work downtown Cedar Falls. And there is a very large um synthetic turf plaza. So that is kind of between a lot of the buildings there, and there are community events there all the time. Uh just this last week, they were setting up for Santa's workshop. So it seems his workshop is there, all of the kids come. Um and explore there, there are constantly several events there, they have um. In the summer, there are vans that come and play, people come and sit over lawn chairs on this turf all the time. There's Wednesday night yoga on this, I mean, it's, it's constantly being used and um. I would say it doesn't give that artificial turf. It feels like a nice. Luscious like turf, turf yard to play on, and it's, it's constantly used for lots of community events.
As far as the surface itself, you know, there's maybe diverse opinions up here, um. I, the, the square footage though, if, if your numbers are, you know, right, if it's like a hundred and fifty by two hundred feet. I was just looking and, and, and that's thirty thousand square feet and that's. That if, chat G P T tells me that's, that's enough for thousands of people to, to be a civic gathering or, is that, that seems to me to be. Appropriate, appropriately sized. Um and I, I hope that. That as the school board, you know, kinda makes its final design tweaks, y- you've heard. Uh you've, you've heard, you know, our sort of hope that, that that be accessible. Um maybe a, a more gracious gate to, to use Patrick's language. Um and, you know, I, I hope you consider strongly Emily's words as well, I.
And I agree, just cause I was gonna say. Uh thinking about the west side playground and the work that went into creating the natural playground. And just the emphasis that this is an early childhood building, so they play differently. Right, so there is this idea, um dirt is important for kids, right, playing in dirt, playing with loose parts. I mean, that's what they do outside, and I would hate to think of having such, and this is, you know, obviously. Me stepping out a little bit, but I do think that there is some advantage to having natural things on site and not making the entire outdoor playground. So sterile that we keep them detached from nature, that, that is my environmental hat.
Yeah.
Educator of twenty five years.
I fully appreciate that, but I do know that it's. It's a reality today that kids play on the tennis courts. And they're not allowed in the mud. Because it's a. It's a hygiene ha- problem. To have. Kids that are very connected to the dirt and the grass, and then to bring that mud into the school building as a challenge. So I think that it's, it, that it's probably happening today that if it is mud, that kids aren't allowed to go on it.
That was one thing that was discussed for an extended period during the value engineering process of. I think a month ago, when we were looking at options to, you know, okay, what's priority, what's not? And there was a large number of staff members from the current John Klein School there, who said in no uncertain terms. Don't give up the turf because it's gonna be an absolute disaster having. People coming in with, you know. Muddy snow boots, whatever else, so. The uh, the choice was made there to try to keep that as an option, we'll see if it's possible cost wise. Because it's. Was almost a universal sentiment among the staff to please, 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 don't make that. Grass. Well, we, we've listened to them and.
So if, if, if we can go back just that, that landscape area that's in that far. Soar southwest kinda corner there. Um.
If you have Dropbox files open, um and these are all publicly available as well, the city council's Dropbox file. Uh five A. Five A, page twenty three, D C S D, all capital letters, one, two, three, four.
Uh so Patrick, I was thinking about the one before. Well, just, just where the, where the large, like, no, no, well. Whichever one. I guess I was. If you went up back to the one you were on. Yeah, so. The fence, could we, could we not consider having the fence kinda mirror where the ten foot path is? And just incor- incorporating the whole area? As like a playground? And maybe do less on trees and more, just have that, that's, that space that isn't turf. Be the grass area.
Just the entirety of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's absolutely possible.
And so then, then we don't have to worry about an interior gate. We have a bigger grass area, so children can, if their teachers allow them, make a choice. To either be on the sterile turf or in the uh. Mud. Um I just, I think of, of play spaces and playgrounds and. Other schools I've been at elementary wise, having nice open spots. So you can run and, you know, have a game of football or tag or whatever, uh not always, trees aren't. Always the most conducive set, so I was like, I was like trees kinda on the edge, not in the middle of, of potential. Spaces.
Our, our approach really was to. In the fence lines has changed throughout the design process. But our approach was to remove vegetation from within the play yard and keep it to the perimeter so that you could still have the vegetation. And maintain an unencumbered play yard, um so that there was a reduction of safety issues and the challenges of kids running and playing. And the size and shape of that play lawn was intentional that you could set up. Football soccer goals in there and, you know, play soccer and play football in that space, and it felt. As much like a player as, as a, a small athletic. Um certainly, that's not the intention that it's being used that way, but it's shaped that way to facilitate. Um more regular games if. That was what was designed.
I, I don't think, of course, go, Carol, I didn't see your hands up.
I like that idea of changing the fencing, and I think that would solve a lot of problems. And but my other question is, what is the square footage of this area of green space compared to on the south side of the building along Hively? That seems to be the space where we, we did now do Nordic Fest at least. How much, how much room is there, like where you have that red there, I don't know, that, that's, that's the present, but in the. In the new site plan, how much green space will be there? Would that be comparable to what's on that west side?
Yeah, so we got just shy of two acres of open space, uh external of city vehicles. Indicated on the plan, um and I, I'm not positive that I have that drawing in here now that I think about it. We are, we are right at about that same amount of open space overall, I'm sorry. Forgive my scrolling, guys. So this, in aggregate. Um we are, we are right at. One point nine four acres of open space on the new site plan. And that didn't include the triangle at the corner outside of the fence perimeter.
And that fencing project does go around the perimeter of that green space, is that correct there, that on that south side?
On the south side, the fence runs along. And connects to the tennis courts, and this whole space in here is fenced in. And that, as drawn, is just shy of an acre. And this area within the play yard, I think's for this, guys, it's a, I'm pretty sure it's not. It's point nine seven nine acres within the fence perimeter as it's drawn here. Um that was prior to. Widening the sidewalk to ten feet, so it'll be a little bit less than that, cause we moved the fence in accordingly. Um but we can, we can play with that, that line. Again, the, the site landscape plan has trees that run along the perimeter of the site on that west side, so. You know, when we, we start shifting fence lines and squeezing down planting space, we lose trees. Um it is a trade off that has to be considered before making the final decision.
And, and that's, that's a point I was gonna make before Carol had her thought, is just that. We should not be designing where the fence goes in this, in this committee of the whole here, uh. We've shared kind of our desire for gracious open space and accessibility, and, and I feel like that's been heard. My encouragement would be that if you do consider removing trees to accommodate. Uh Superintendent Corona's idea to shift the fence more towards the outline of the property, that you at least keep some mature trees near the edge. Because I think that's, that's valuable for so many reasons, not just for the school.
Right.
Uh but, but for the city, you know, in terms of bird life and, and cooling down the lot, but also for calming traffic, navigating that intersection. So I, I certainly hope that, that we don't just move the fence all the way to the edge and, and. Make it all grass, uh thinking that that's what we're looking for, cause that's not what I'm looking for.
As a landscape architect, I appreciate you saving some trees.
Although I know we've talked, maybe this would love to see them go away.
So one idea, just to throw this out there, being around the gate.
Yep.
Because I agree with you, like, I think if, if this is, you know. Steve says thirty thousand people, you're saying this whole thing is point nine, right?
Yes.
Okay, so if, even if you extended the gate a little bit so you could cut it off in this direction, so it was at an angle like this. You could have a much more open gate there in the summer or a different way than that ninety degree.
When I answers this forty dollars, clearly, that's out, right, we have a pretty decent size, I mean, you would get a length for our town.
All great points, and we'll certainly take everything under advisement.
I guess I have a broader question, it, it really skews more towards city council and probably Travis, um. Way back when, um during site, or during facility committee meetings. And now we're talking about it from, uh how do you get across Court Street, so we avoid point corners, et cetera. Um I'm not trying to advocate any direction here, but I'd like to ask the question. What if some of these streets aren't two-way streets? So I, I'm gonna pick on myself and my driving habits on Hively. I choose to drive on Hively because I can avoid the stoplights on Main Street. But if I knew Hively only traveled one direction. And Claiborne traveled the other, I would go to whichever one was the one way. And I would never be driving the wrong way down one of those one ways. If we designed it the right way, wouldn't that allow us to have a crosswalk where there is no blind corner? Cause the only traffic is traveling the other direction, that makes sense? It's never coming at the blind way, it's coming from visible side.
That would make your, uh you'd have to redesign how your buses are going, right? Because that would come this direction then.
Well, the bus would go left instead of right.
We, we wanted to go right, just from the standpoint that passengers, that is a vehicle on the right hand side.
But with the. But with the bus lane being pulled off the street, does that matter?
It could be designed that way, but. That configuration.
I think the other trouble, I mean, traffic wise for town. Right, is that people decided to avoid. I mean, it's an dizzy only. You got water street and you got this.
Yep.
You know, from a city traffic flow standpoint, I think that would be pretty difficult.
Yeah, and again, not trying to, we should do one thing or the other, asking a question because perhaps that does.
I think it was make problems with the roundabout being in there well, yeah, just one way. You're here with that?
You would just throw that island would extend south, so a vehicle can't exit that turn. They can only enter it. You know, that. The whole vehicle traffic flow was talked about as part of that North Alley study that the city, the school. Um, downtown businesses, the public as a whole, we're all part of those stakeholder meetings. You know, I'll I'll be honest, I was surprised that the report came up with a recommendation of closing Claiborne. I thought for sure it would have came up with a recommendation to close Hively. I mean, there's no. Economic driver off of Hively, and like you said, everyone uses it to just bypass Water Street. You ask if you could, I mean, it could be done to Patrick's point. In all likelihood, you would want. Um. You would want Hively Street probably one way to the west. Then Claiborne one way to the east. Again, that would allow for. The bus traffic to flow right into the bus loop and as it exits, it's still continuing west in that proposed site. Um. From an emergency response, that would allow both police and fire. Because that's the big one is there to go east at all, whether they're coming out of Goose Island or. That intersection. They're gonna have to. Excuse me, get head east and. You'd have you'd have to do that on Claiborne. That would have to be the east direction.
Hey, I don't know if it's the best use of our time to keep. Because I don't, I don't think that, uh, there's, there's a lot of interest in this right now, um, and and nothing that we. Do, I mean, if in twenty years, the council's like, hey, we need to rethink about the routing of traffic. That's. That's their problem. Let's not solve it for them. Um, I feel like we're kind of committed to both way traffic on both Hively and Claiborne, so. That's what, yeah.
Other questions relative to. These proposals that I believe.
Think we talked a little bit about cutouts on. And I'm, that's maybe not the right word, but, well. We could put into our design. Cutouts if the city wants to put crosswalks. There they can off of. Claiborne.
Yeah, yeah, what? What we did was facilitate a connection to the north sidewalk. And a future, a future study for crossing that that location would need to take into consideration traffic. Existing parking, uh, crossing distance, all of those things that we look at when we're trying to identify where crosswalks, um, will go in. Um, but our site will respond to a future opportunity for that quite nicely in that direct connection. Across and along the west side. Was there another? There is some existing angled parking here that in my opinion, and I'm not a traffic engineer, but in my opinion would need to come out. And then we would. Create a bump out there. In decrease the crossing distance, create some side friction for vehicles and and then. Eliminate a site distance issue for people coming around the corner here by taking that parking out of the equation, but. That sounds like that's a conversation for Claiborne.
Tim and Travis correctly, was there another spot for a cutout like further to the east on Claiborne there from that one?
Yeah, so there was a, Tim and I had a conversation about on the east side. Whether it's, um, you know. From a staff perspective, we were thinking on the west side where, um, the west side of that driveway, which you can't quite. So right now you're showing it in the current location of the the temporary one. What I would call a temporary, but from city staff perspective, we were thinking further west. Where the building exit, if you continue that walk straight north, that way you avoid. Being between those two, well, essentially three driveways. It puts you on the far west end. Of all the driveways. So instead of putting them in between those two. Put it on the west side of the high school, correct, right there.
Yeah.
So if it goes there, then you are west of all of those driveways instead of in between, uh, the potential for turning traffic. But eliminate or reducing it to one way in. Off of Claiborne, that helps alleviate the the concern on that crosswalk location. You still have the two directional traffic for the high school on the west side. But you're gonna have that if it's on the west side of that driveway anyway.
Could you, could you tell me the wrong Travis? With that proposed connection to a potential bump out. Does that connect it immediately to all the parking the school has on Goose Island and west of the high school building?
On the far west end or the one?
The one that you're talking about here. I I just, I feel like if we're going to be leaving room for a potential bump out and crossing. We should think about how people are going to connect to the gym in the elementary school. From all the parking that's already extended on the north side, because there's not enough parking on this site to serve the gym. It's like, where are people going to be crossing from the school's parking to get to the competition gym? That's probably where we should try to figure out how to get a good crossing.
Right, and that would likely, in my opinion, that would likely be on the west side of that driveway entrance. Uh, because if I'm parked in the driveway on the north side and I gotta come down to the competition gym on this site. I'm not going to the east to get to that temp crossing, then down then back to the west. I'm cutting straight across. Anybody that's been to a football game, track meet, uh, baseball game knows. People are not walking to, you know, to one of the crosswalks crossing and then getting their parking on the south side of Claiborne. They're cutting straight across. So that's another reason why city staff was looking at that crossing on the far west end. Closer to Goose Island Drive and the the driveway to the far west high school parking lot as well. Because those are the two. Crossings that we see happening, uh, for regular flow.
And when when you talk about temporary parking, that would be where we move the. Uh, stop sign on wheels.
Uh, yeah, the temporary crossing. That usually the stop sign disappears. Sometimes when I walk home. Um, like we talked about.
I feel free to bring it in if you.
I'm aware, I'm aware.
Send me know, we'll give you a quarter.
Oh, so anyway, uh, those are the two locations that. We see kind of like the. What's the term? I used cattle path before and then I got corrected. Dire path, thank you.
So it sounds like there's a good plan for accommodating potential future crossings with the site plan that you're thinking about submitting, and that's what we want to make sure happens. That sounds good.
And and while we haven't specifically evaluated the grades here at this potential crossing location. Um, I don't think it's any more of a challenge from the city sidewalk to the curb here than it is there. So it seems. Without drilling into the numbers, it seems feasible that 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 connection could be made in the future. When all of those other improvements were.
It's one of those things with looking at a site plan, is thinking about where people are actually gonna walk, right? We can put, we can put crosswalks there. Uh, and so one of the concerns I assume you have with the site, which. I think I have mentioned, and I don't know what can be done, but I do worry that. Kids and not during school hours, but. Kids even in the competition gym, whatever, with the building you go downtown, they're gonna come here and prosecute. With that building here, there really is no sight for them, of people driving this way. So I worry about proximity of the building close to the street there. Um. You know, and it's been dropped. What does it look like to move the building over? To get rid of that issue, and I I don't know if you've thought about that or what that would look like.
We we have looked at it. We've talked about it. Um, there are a handful of challenges with doing that. Um. Us looking at it from the perspective of it's a site distance issue for kids that are. Crossing there. Is a different conversation that goes back to do you put a crosswalk here at the S curve, which we don't like as an idea.
Right.
To does moving the building X number of feet in the easterly direction. Make a difference in doing that and just from a mathematical perspective, shifting ten feet to the east. Only reduces that distance by six feet. So the the trigonometry is not not favoring a move that materially change the site distance. At the same time, you know, we're making every effort to provide safe and well-marked crossing locations here and we can't. Always gain control of those students that are doing that. And so it's a, it's a big shift for. Very little return from an actual distance perspective.
And that doesn't help with stormwater.
It doesn't. In fact, it creates some challenges for us over here with getting the sidewalk down in distant grade, so. We are, all things considered, we're we're very tightly fit into the site in the east-west direction and quite honestly, the north-south direction. To mitigate the various challenges that we face throughout the design process. So. If we shift east, we create challenges for ourselves over here. If we shift west, we create some challenges for ourselves over here. So. We're very much kind of fine tuning the building placement to mitigate challenges on both sides.
Patrick, where does the fencing come in that area that you're talking about?
Over here.
Right, can that be fenced in so that that it just would would naturally move people over to the west to cross the street there?
Well, the fence would would only extend to the corner of the building at most. In this location, we wouldn't extend it out into that area. So. I mean, at at the very least, there's still the sidewalk connection here to the crossing at the drop-off lane. Um, short of disconnecting this and sort of terminating that ten-foot shared use path. Into that island and coming across this way, um, there isn't really a. A way to create a physical barrier there. And and even there, it would still just be landscape by grade. It wouldn't be a wall or anything deterring folks from.
And there's a gate there at that.
There's a gate back here at the corner of the building, and if you were to shift the fence out that way, you would just relocate the gate along with that fence.
And that really is a short distance to that crosswalk that we have. What would you, what would you estimate that distances? And there's a sidewalk there that would naturally lead someone over there to.
Yeah, it'd be marked and would just lead you back over to the west.
Plus, are you adding another one to?
Um, this is the old plan.
Because then they don't block, you know, they would see it from.
Yeah. In in putting diagrams together for this evening, it was a balance of. How much of the new plan did we show versus how do we talk about some of these issues relative to the old design? So you're seeing diagrams kind of all over the place with the background.
So along those lines of Patrick. They just hear if we stop short, that ten-foot section, that's part of the city's project with Hively Phase Two. That could also be, uh. A guide for, all right, you're, you either needed to cross that Court Street or you're cutting left here to get across the drive bus loop driveway. So what you're saying?
Yes, but with this caveat. I think that the current configuration with the ten-foot coming all the way to the bus turn lane is the right solution for folks that are on bicycles. Because it gives them a nice wide pathway and a very clear crossing to come across the street and onto the site. When you introduce bicycles along an access aisle for ADA parking, in my mind, it creates some conflict that we want to try.
Okay.
So I would recommend that we just continue that ten foot to the location that we've shown it. Mark the crossing over the bus lane and then connect the sidewalk as we've done here to facilitate better movement for people on bikes.
Patrick, I know, uh, backing up to maybe the beginning of the conversation, when we talked about reducing the parking lot. Know you talked about on the south lawn that we would put in, that'd be grass. But in the north lot, did you talk about what that'll be where there used to be cement?
Yeah, so we would. Probably not put grass. Four foot grass strip behind parking stalls, bare in the home, uh, it's more than likely gonna be a rock ground covered with plant material in there. Uh, in all likelihood, excuse me, it's gonna be a perennial grass that can be mowed down in the winter time. And then we'll just come back up in the spring, easy maintenance. We'll get some bumper screening from that. Um. It'll be a much more pleasant. Landscape experience along the edge of that parking lot, but it will still be easy to maintain.
What kind of grass are you going with? I know it sounds way in the weeds, but I'll be serious, uh. We are looking at immediately south of that. That we are doing, uh, some functional landscaping of a bioswale. That does have a buffalo grass mix as well as part of it, so you can either let it grow tall, tall. Taller or mow it down. And, you know, it's something that we could take into consideration so that all sides of the street are actually of the same composition, so.
Yeah, Tim, we can give you a deal on some grassy.
Right?
Yeah.
Let's talk. We'll talk later, yeah.
Um, I would invite the council or the school board. I know that we've. You know, I feel like we've covered a lot of ground in the areas that Patrick has already covered. Are there any questions that are top of mind that haven't been voiced yet? That you'd like? To bring up?
I've I've got a tiny one. And Patrick, I'm just curious, did did you all like, in terms of the the places where pedestrians are crossing the bus apron, there's three of them.
Yeah.
Uh, we're we're just talking about. The markings are basically painted on the the bus surface? Or you guys have something like, uh, raised pedestrian crossings or what 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 were your considerations there and what did you go with?
No, it's a good question. Um, it's pageant markings, not raised blocks. Uh, stormwater is a challenge out here and how we manage it. So there are areas where we have to be careful in how we raise pavement to prevent. Water from flowing in one direction or another. So the surface markings give us the most flexibility in terms of how we manage stormwater. Um, and they're easily maintained and don't create. Particularly with turning movements especially, um, don't create challenges for vehicles moving across them. When we use a speed table or a raised crosswalk, crosswalk, crosswalk type configuration. Um, we generally do it in perpendicular configurations only to the path of travel. Uh, because it's much easier for a vehicle to navigate up and over comfortably. Once you start. Turning over the tops of them, it gets pretty wonky.
Sure, and I I figured there'd be special. Challenges with buses navigating it as well. I was kind of curious though if that was an option or, um. If I know that we haven't decided on the color of the paint for the crossings yet, we don't need to do that in here either. I hope I hope you all considered. Thermoplas, something that that holds up to to more than a few months of winter and, uh, and so you consider full. Full pavement markings that that designated pretty clearly is a place where, uh, people driving cars or buses need to be aware there's gonna be a lot of kids on it, so.
Yeah, you know, crosswalk striping is an interesting conversation. Standard practice has always been to just run parallel lines. But continental markings, um, are much more functional and visible, uh, within the streetscape and so. Um, everything that we've shown is intended as more of a continental marking, so it has a boxed out solid. Um, solid crosswalk pattern to it rather than just parallel lines.
I think it's good for kids to also know that they belong there and sometimes white boxes that disappear the first time a snowplow goes by doesn't doesn't send that message very well. Thank you.
Continentals is vertical bars, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm a fan of the breakfast.
Other questions from the group?
Just a point of clarification, going back to the turf, you said that was on a bed of rock and that would allow for more appearing to dwell.
Yeah, so generally when we specify synthetic turf, we have. We have two goals, right? Uh, the first is to provide a uniform playing surface. The second is to make water as quickly as we can so that you can return and play as quickly as possible, which is a lot of the reasons why we made. The decision to spec turban to have this setup, we could get students out there playing. Um, because it is important to their daily routine, right? Um, the other, the other that we need to address is how do we handle that water once it gets underneath the surface? And so. In in all of the synthetic turf locations on the site, because we have synthetic turf on both sides. Um, they've got under drains, so that water will percolate through quickly. Turn playing surface to play ability right away, and then the water will just go right into the retention basis that we have underground. Great, thank you.
Um, have you and Travis had, speaking of stormwater, have you and Travis had a chance to talk about the velocity of the pipe and?
Travis and I have communicated via voicemail and email that John and I spoke on the phone earlier today. Um. We understand that there are challenges with. That pipe. We understand that there is going to be continued conversations in addressing those challenges because there's still somewhat. Things moving around relative to. MSA's project and this project and making sure that we get the right submission. We get the right submission from the site. We are working with, we've inherited a very difficult situation from a stormwater perspective. Um, the way that we're handling the water on site currently is that we are retaining the access from baseline. On site. But that doesn't change the pipe slope configuration. Um, one of the solutions that we looked at and that we've designed to thus far is to install a pipe that has a much smoother pipe surface. Which will allow increased volume and velocity. Um, it's not. Not the end-all solution. There's still more um, more design to be done to figure out what the best. Possible end configuration for this. Based on my conversation with John, I think we've got in in my eighteen years, I see you. We have additional conversations that need to be had to see if we can give you an appropriate situation. But we're looking at.
I do think that it's wor- I mean, it's worrisome to me, obviously, and I mean, the council and the local, but. Think those are the things involved when, I mean, we get a lot of letters about why did you do this? And I I do think figuring that stormwater out is a little uncomfortable to pass a site plan when you. Don't know actually what's been figured out for stormwaters in this area.
That's probably the biggest moving part of this over the design perspective, given all of the constraints.
There's a lot more infertile surface on this in their lungs.
Correct. There is, but we didn't. From the standpoint of making up the difference in what we've retained. Now it's a question of. Do the finished grades increase with decrease side runoff? Or are we we managing that on site before it leaves, which we are? Um, versus just creating an excess of permeable surfaces or impermeable surface and then. Just sending it downstream and letting it be someone else's problem.
Just pointing out, if you let it downstream, it doesn't become somebody else's problem. Okay, so downstream.
Yeah, the there there are some decisions that we are making that will improve situation with silation in the pipe, for example. By changing the pipe material from corrugated metal to a smooth material. It will it will allow stormwater to flow through and clean that. Um, what it doesn't change for us is when the pond backs up, that pipe backs as a reservoir. So really, the challenge is not in so much that it serves that function. It's that we need stormwater to move through that pipe after the pond level reduces to help clean it out. And one of the simplest things that we can do is ensure that the pipe material is more conducive. The water flowing through it and cleaning. Um, cleaning out that so that might otherwise collect in the corrugating.
So looking at go away from CMP to. Precast or.
We're getting out.
Looking at W wall, double wall.
HDP as a part of the design, John and I have talked about his feelings on HDP. We know that the coefficient of friction coefficient of friction for the HDP is much better. Than what it is for CMP. So there's an improvement there already. But now it's a question of looking at storm flow in and out. Um, to ensure that we can we can clean it more.
I was gonna say, when when it is, let's say that. You know, it's planned for the best, but sometimes the worst happens. If that pipe has to get cleaned, is that the school and they're responsible or is the city responsible?
That is a question that's above my pay grade.
I mean, unless it's specified in that easement agreement. That that would also need to be done because the pipe needs to be realigned. So we need that new easement agreement. That will specify the expectations. Speaking candidly, the school doesn't have the equipment to maintain that pipe. Um, arguably, we it's a fifty-four inch pipe. So quite frankly, running our jet truck through it. Isn't going to be that great either. The city is much more uh well-equipped though to to handle that maintenance of the pipe, not necessarily the surface material.
But then is there a reavert? I mean. It'd be interesting when we're thinking about that easement, what that looks like in terms of who's responsible for the pipe, given that I do think that. Changing something significantly that has some serious consequences.
And the type of pipe I do think is going to probably play into that as well.
And I wonder about the age of the infrastructure today. I'm sure that if we went in there, it's not squeaky clean. That's an assumption and I'm not, I don't know. I don't know. But with the.
So redirecting it, you're changing that slope. You don't have the same grade that's on the pipe that is currently there today.
I acknowledge that, but I think, is it still true to say that, I mean. The the project has been engineered to to meet requirements. So. We're not outside of the, I realize that it is a change in slope. But it will be new infrastructure with new materials. Um, that still fits within the minimum requirements of of. Designing the project.
I would just add, again, we're inheriting the situation and. And making decisions that will offset the change in pipe slope.
Yeah, I think that's what we're asking, right?
We know about the difficult situation because we live in this bowl and I constantly have to deal with it on everything we have learned.
And and the consequences are directly to the school, right? I mean, if this is full of floods, it's still, it's in your best interest to do it.
If if we were designing from scratch. We wouldn't have a pipe at this slope. Higher existing work for us.
Other last call for other questions about. This item on the agenda. I do want to keep track of time. Because we need to adjourn to allow, can you remind me what time your next meeting starts?
Five forty-five.
Five forty-five. And your meeting is not here.
No, it can, I will point out, it can be started any point after. So I don't want. This group to feel rushed that we need to be done at five forty-five. Now I'd say if we push six, now we're starting to get a little little far out there.
Um, out of respect of time, um, I invite any other questions about this top item on the agenda. There is a second item on our agenda. That. States discussion with Decor City Council and School Board regarding. The joint administration of tennis courts. Which we can discuss together tonight. Um, if there's anything.
Okay. Uh, so the twenty eighty for the tennis courts, we're just finishing up. We're getting on to, it's a fifteen-year agreement. And goes through September of twenty twenty-six. So we had. We had offered to extend that. Obviously, we need to change it around because the tennis courts will be moving under the plan. We'd offered to extend it. But we also understand as we. Yes, we offered to extend it because we knew it needed to be, something needed to change. And we uh uh suggested that that might be something the city council would be interested in. At the same time, after listening to last Monday's uh city council meeting, it is possible that we wouldn't have a an agreement. City, things have changed in the last fifteen years. Obviously, the city is going to have their own sports complex. With uh lighted pickleball fields and. Uh, when the plan went into place, we had a, we jointly shared, you know, I think two of the courts are on city land and four are on ours. Uh, city, four, two are on city land, four are on school district land. So it was kind of a joint like, hey, let's share this. Um, I don't know how common that is for tennis courts. Um, I will say it's i- if. We can manage them and do the maintenance on them and all that kind of stuff as we would. If we, you know, lo- lots of lots of the school districts just own their own tennis courts and and manage that. Obviously, Travis has kind of pointed out, you know, we would then answer to the tax, you know. An- answer the taxpayers if they were locked up, you know, in the summertime. And and so we it wouldn't be a, you know. No one on this board saying that we would just have these just for our. Uh, high school athletes or our, you know, it also serves as our uh. Hard surface playground. But yeah, I I think that would be the option. So the question really is. Um, do we want to move forward and talk about another fifteen-year agreement? Or do we want to not have an agreement? Um, either one is, I think. Fine on our perspective, we just kind of need to know what city council is thinking. And if it is is a situation where we don't want to have an agreement, then we would just ask if we could terminate so that we could start construction. Provided a site plan gets approved, because I'd hate to get everything approved and then not start construction uh because we have an agreement on tennis courts. Is that the quick summary?
Right. And that's what I was trying to get at last Monday. Way the agenda item was drafted, it was about joint administration twenty eighty agreement period. So. Uh, if the council, uh, as Tim pointed out, we don't jointly own the land. It's all on school-owned property. As pointed out, you know, all city of Decor residents are or a school district taxpayers as well. So if the school board, which I don't believe there's any indication that if they said they were going to lock everyone out from using them outside of the school hours. Which again is what the proposed twenty eighty agreement said is that the public would be allowed to use them outside of school hours. We don't necessarily need a twenty eighty agreement. The part in the twenty eighty agreement on the lighting, if that is something that council. Is adamant about and wants to make sure becomes a part of the tennis courts as a whole. That's that's really where I. I I guess my point to the council is that's really the only place that there's value from a city perspective on why we would entertain a twenty eighty agreement. But there's also an argument to be said, if the public says there needs to be lights on there, we'll talk to the school board. They own the land.
Yeah, I think. I don't, I don't want to repeat everything that we said last week. That that's my inclination is just to say that maybe this is cleaner and more logical to to say that that. This these are the school boards tennis or the schools tennis courts. Uh, the schools, the proper agency to tax all of us, including city residents to maintain them and take care of them and build them. Uh, the schools also, uh, you know, most interested in making sure that they control who has access and when, uh, which. I I respect, I think that makes sense. Your teams need to to have access. So it seems to me like us having a role here is. Is maybe creating complications where we don't need them and reflects the way things were a couple decades ago when maybe. Maybe the city was a little more flush and the state was a little less hardcore about our ability to collect taxes to support things like that. Um, I I uh. I I do want to say that I think it's exceptional and and worth remarking that. That that we're talking about a a joint use agreement for tennis courts now. Like that, that means we successfully had the important part of this conversation. Uh, and I I just want to thank, um, I, you know, we we moved quickly to that, Cindy. I I appreciate your good chairpersonship, but. But uh, but Tim and Travis especially have done a lot of work this week, ensuring that this meeting goes smoothly and uh and I I just want to thank both of them for their leadership. And and all the rest who have uh been working hard, including, I'm sure overtime and and overnight maybe. To to make sure that we can make this about getting uh on a good path forward. Uh, for the quid, the the children and and a quick resolution. So I just want to celebrate that. Uh, and and if, you know, if we don't figure out the tennis courts tonight, like, that's okay with me. Thank you.
Yes, gratitude to our planning teams. You all have been working day and night and late night and weekends. Thank you.
Um, quick question of the school board. I noticed uh when you requested the new twenty eighty E agreement. With us that your plan was to possibly have lighting in three years or something. Would that still be what you'd be shooting for?
Well.
Can't even answer that at this time.
We can't answer that at this time. Um, you know, we are, we need to get. Our project to bid on time and we need to get to bid day and we need to know financially where we're at. I can tell you that the infrastructure is planned in this project to be able to accommodate lights. It would just be a matter of when we can afford to. Um, install those.
Oh, I would just add, the lights don't really get utilized by certainly the recessed children or. Or the varsity tennis. Um, but the fact that we'd have them ready to, you know, the infrastructure there. I could see that absolutely being part of a future plan. It's just, we've got other priorities and bid alternates and like if if if. As an example, as as important as maybe the turf was to teachers, I would want to prioritize that over. Lights for the for the midnight pickleballers.
I will, I will say that, I mean, if you drive by any Friday night or Saturday night, it's not them, it is high school students.
Yeah.
And I would say that in terms of looking out for your high school students. Lighted tennis courts are huge because they really do use it as a community gathering space and in our town where there's not as much to do. Um, having them hanging out in the tennis courts and playing some ball, it's sitting in circles. I mean, when you watch it really using the lighted tennis courts. It is the decor when you school district students. So I really would, um, I don't think it is appropriate for the city. Um, to finance that aspect, but I do think that the school district should should heavily consider lighting the courts for your students.
What is the official process for resolving that twenty eighty?
Well, if we could have a few more council members maybe speak to that. If general consensus is to terminate the existing twenty eighty and not need renewal, that's pretty easy.
Um, can we, one other question that I have about process. Regards reintroducing approval of our site plan.
That's why I asked John to be here.
Great.
So. Assuming. I don't know, I'm not going to address your process, whether you need board approval to submit an amended site plan or not. But from a city perspective, John, based on what you heard tonight. I'm not necessarily seeing anything drastic enough to the point to require P and Z review necessarily.
No, I mean, the part, what I caught and what I look for is. The scope, size and nature of the project. The nature, it's still an elementary school. The size, I mean, the footprint has not changed of the building or the project, right?
Right.
Then it's this more ambiguous scope. And. There's no new buildings, there's no new facilities like. To uh recreational courts or anything like that. The um, I'm not concerned about. Moving or adding vegetation or the bump outs or the crosswalks. So the one thing that came that I still had a question about, but I think we had this. Last time also was the stormwater management. Ha- has there been any change though to what? Was presented last week as far as stormwater.
No changes proposed at this point. They're still working on pipe material. Which the uh, I can't remember if it's in the easement agreement itself, or if it was in the purchase agreement. Where it states the plans and specifications on the pipe relocation need to be approved by the city. So we could maybe address it through through that.
And wasn't that in the uh engineer's recommendation for P at P and Z is uh anyway?
It was that the pipe needed to have the new calculations run on it based on that type. Yeah, it was one of the contingencies listed.
Which P and Z approved anyway. So I don't see any substantial change to the plan that would require to go back to P and Z, right?
So I asked John to be here so that I could actually say this, if. A council member that voted no, which would have been the prevailing side on Monday night's meeting. Says they would like to do a motion to reconsider for the December first meeting. Anybody can be that second. It could be somebody that voted in the affirmative. But if uh one council member tells that voted no, says I want a motion to reconsider, followed by the site plan. Hopefully as amended, I'll I'll leave that to Tim. You contact me and let me know what is going to be the submittal. And then, um, again, two council members need to tell me on the agenda. One of them needs to be a person that voted no. Then it could be on the December first agenda for consideration.
I I'd be willing to either motion to reconsider or unsure several of us would, but I I have a few more things I I I want to just question like. I want to ensure that some of the amenities that that were mentioned are in the site plan. Uh, so so things like. Tim, I I know it's small, but I I'd like to. See a reference to the signs, you know what I'm saying? That that there's going to be a visible indication that these facilities are. Are open to the public during non-school hours as part of the site plan, uh, not just sort of. Um, something we talked about in the meeting once that we have to dig up, you know, two years down the road, but something that's actually written down. Um, I I'd like to see that as as part of it, uh, and and just so there's no surprises. I I want to kind of talk about expectations here. Um, and 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 it's and and go ahead, Emily. Yeah.
No, I would say if you're top gates.
Yeah, it's basically the the things that we talked about. Um, if there could be a just an addendum saying like, hey, these are, these are sort of mutually expected, you know, kind of. Shared expectations. I I guess that's what mutually expected means, but um, I I'd like to see them written down.
John, could we maybe do an MOU that's attached to the overall site plan?
Yeah.
As opposed to updating the site plan itself for some of these other.
I I think we could, when the city sold this land to the school, we updated the facilities use agreement. And I I think we could use that as somewhat of a model. For some of for some of these things. But I think that to be, that should be considered for approval. Uh, at the same time as the site plan. So you know what? You're you're voting on both of those things. One right after the other or together even.
I guess the question is how quickly can that be done? Got to us because we need it before Friday, right, to be able to. Yeah, Thursday, as I was saying, before Friday.
Yeah, Friday at noon would be our cutoff to have stuff out to council.
So from the from the council's standpoint. We'd be able to put that on the agenda.
As long as I hear a second.
Let's get it on the.
Alright, so. All right, so December first, we could have it.
And we need to get you a revised site plan.
If you can get.
There's two.
Enough to convey what's been presented by Patrick and, and discussed tonight. Um, we don't necessarily need bid drawings for the site plan approval, we don't need that level of detail. As long as it does express what's been discussed, our, the council could approve it.
With that MOA that you've mentioned.
I thought John's suggestion for how to make sure that we're on the same page and I think that's a good way forward, you know, and then for the community for it to be written.
I think we recorded that facility, with facilities use agreement, though this whole question about twenty or thirty years from now, what was agreed to. Uh, there is some public record out there.
Right, I, I'd just like for there to be a general, uh, written and shared understanding that, that, that. I think we all know in our various organizations, times when people leave boards and all of a sudden. What do you mean we can't have our gathering there? You, you know what I'm saying? Let's, let's write it down so that we avoid those conversations for people who follow in our footsteps.
The one question I had is, in talking with some of our previous thing about getting this from two parcels to one parcel, is that something that has to be done ahead of time or is that?
So is that, we had talked about that, you have some legal requirement for that, right?
The bond, isn't it?
Uh, we do do for constructability, so the state code official requires.
State code is, I would say our city code will, doesn't require that, but, um. You could do a plaid of survey and combine them through that. Which you're not going to have by Friday at noon.
Yeah.
But to come.
Yeah.
You can start working on that.
Hmm, yeah, because your site plan doesn't, something that most people left before it got conveyed last week Monday, so your site plan. Is valid for a hundred and eighty days. You need to pull a, a billing permit within those hundred and eighty days and then you're fine. Uh, those variants is granted, those are valid for two years from award, so the, the question on timing, like, um. One of the things I'll point out, the site plan was contingent upon the easement agreement. If we don't have that easement agreement within a hundred and eighty days, for some reason. Your site plan's no longer valid and we gotta do this over again. So, let's work expeditiously to get all of these things tied up so you can pull a billing permit within those hundred and eighty days. Once council approves the site plan.
Yeah, to the point, if, if the site plan would be approved on December first, then a hundred and eighty day clock starts then.
Correct, yes.
There will be contingency on stormwater, from getting that figured out.
Is it December third?
If, if things fall apart, you can't get it, I, I'm not opposed to a special meeting, so. I mean, I don't think you have to wait till this, like, if things can't get done, it is a holiday, I just want to be rocking, I want to be cognizant of that, right? So, it is not the end of the world if we have to have a second meeting.
I don't want anything to fall.
What?
I don't want anything to fall apart.
It's not a terrible deal for us to come together for.
No.
We can be next Wednesday if we need to.
Make everyone work twenty-four hours for holidays.
So, so just to clarify from our end, you, what we need isn't a, for this is, is an addendum to you or do we need actually a memorandum of understanding? That we would need to meet to pass.
Well, I work with John on what that language, whether it's the MOU, the facilities use group, whatever that looks like. I'll work with John on that, get it to you Tim, you can disseminate work however. But from the school, if we can get, uh, the planning team to. Again, not, not bid level, just design documents. Um, if you guys need to reapprove it, I don't know how you want to handle that, but. We just need that, uh, the Friday before our council meeting at noon. So that that can go out to the council as well as the public for the weekend.
Could, could we pass the site plan contingent on the board accepting, uh, the language that, that. You all work out as staff between you. I, I mean, I, I guess Carol's.
They're not having a meeting, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, so to the point of. I haven't met with the whole school board and said, here's what I got from Travis, you know, it's been, um, so. Giving this board an opportunity to look and, you know, they, they saw a lot of the stuff for the first time when you guys saw it and just making sure they're. Comfortable with the reduction in parking, I think is the big, big one, um, and when that could happen, um. We'll work on that as well, um. So, could we have that meeting by Friday? Possibly. Or we got another meeting on Wednesday, so.
Again, that's why I'm saying, if it is literally like, I, I really don't, but we also.
We're on a tight schedule to kick off our bid. And we want to stick to that. Tom, is there any, anything that you want to say about that?
I mean, yeah, I, I would, if, if we can get everything done like, you know, by the first, that's great, because what we're doing. Uh, inside the building walls, we're, we're still moving full speed ahead as planned so that the site can kind of catch up with the rest and merge together and we bid this note on time, but. Um, yeah, we're, we're up against clocks, so you know, we, we have our CPM scheduled, critical path method scheduled, we're doing mathematically, prove exactly how long it's going to take to build. And if we, if we delay, we're just kind of pushing it out and, and our, our main objective is to get it done before. Uh, fall of twenty twenty-seven for the school year.
So what I'm hearing, Tom says you're perfectly fine with Patrick getting this done by Friday.
I was just going to say, get it submitted until the fifteenth. Wouldn't be that big of a deal from you. A lot of the drawings are, a lot of the drawing is already done, so.
So it's, it's feasible from your, your, your end, okay.
I, I, I appreciate all of you, but especially the board's willingness to contemplate even changes that are significant for the sake of. Council priorities regarding circulation, traffic, flowing connectivity, knowing that, that it's, it's caused some kind of some sacrifices to. To things in the plan that maybe were preferred on your end, uh, but, but I appreciate that we're all able to sort of shelve what was behind and, and press forward here. It sounds like we're on a pretty good schedule, so. Um, yeah, however the council can make this go faster, we're here for it, right?
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody, appreciate it.
I'll call the manager.
Alright.